Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Ms. Barrios, would you please call the room?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller. Victor Garza.
Yep.
John Massengill.
Here.
James Mulkey. Steve Bryant.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the Prayer and the Pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Darlene Gorm, Principal at John Glenn Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Bryant, members of the board and guests. It is my privilege to open this meeting tonight on behalf of John Glenn Elementary with special assistance from both current and former students. To assist me with the pledges are Chloe and Callie Friesenhahn. Chloe is going to be a first grader this year at John Glenn, and Callie is going to be a sixth grader. She's transitioning from Oak Crest to Heritage. I also have with me Emma Ethan and Faith Davenport. Emma's going to be a third grader with us, and Ethan is going to be a freshman at the high school transitioning from Heritage, and Faith will be starting her junior year. All right.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated.
Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for the gift of education in all forms. Lord, please bless all our teachers, friends, and relatives as they make their way back to their classrooms for another year. Help them to feel excitement enjoying the promise of a new start. Give them imagination and creativity to make wonders. Lord, please give wisdom all year.
Help them quickly spot the little souls who are going to need something extra from them this year. Help them have just the right words of encouragement for each student. Please supply them energy too, Lord. Please let them sleep well at night so they are rested and refreshed each morning. Please keep the students and teachers safe this year.
Let the students be excited about this wonderful world and all there is to learn about it. Give the parents willing hearts to be involved in their children's education. Let this be a truly wonderful year for everyone involved in education. Let everyone feel at the end of the year that they learned all they could and gave the best they had. Amen.
Amen. Very good. Very good.
Thank you, guys. When preparing for this evening, we decided that we really didn't want this to be a year of last for John Glenn, as it is a very pivotal year for us. But instead, we wanted to honor the closing of one chapter and the opening of another in the East Central community. And so, at John Glenn, we lift up the belief that all our kids are all our kids, and this is extended to a larger scale within the district as well. The students here represent the families within our system. Additionally, they represent the spirit of the EC family. And it's always a pleasure that I share with you this beautiful tribute to EC ISD. What is it that makes EC the special place that it is? A place where generations remain and new families continue to find it as home. Here are sentiments from students, staff, and parents, some longtime residents, and some brand-new ones. We asked them why EC, and this is what they said.
Hi, my name is Kendall Tally. I'm a 2017 graduate of East Central High School, and I will be furthering my education at LeMarne University. In my time at East Central, I've been not only as a student but as a person, and I have learned to appreciate this sense of family and community within the district. After I have completed my four years of college, I would like to return to the East Central area to raise my children with the same sense of community and family that I have in my years at EC.
My name is Courtney Hobbs. I enjoy East Central because my kids go here. I volunteer, and I also substitute teach. I love the close-knit community, the faculty and staff, and of course, the students.
What does East Central mean to you?
My teachers are very good, and I have friends, and they're good safety.
So why did you choose EC?
I chose EC for the commitment and traditions.
I love EC because of the teachers and their high expectations.
I love EC because of the sports and bowling.
I love EC because the teachers make learning fun inside the family.
What does East Central mean to you?
Teachers help the kids learn and make you fresh.
Why EC? I truly traveled miles, approximately 200,000 miles by car and four children there because of my fellow teachers. Regardless of the background, there were always people around me that made me feel like family. They were willing to step in to help no matter the situation, professionally or personally. My own children went to John Glenn, so this day they still tell their friends about the big ol' tree in the back and all the memories that they have here.
Being able to come home to coach at East Central, that's an opportunity that a lot of times. I would be able to do that with your dad and your brother, now that's something to strike about.
Hi, my name is Josie Johnson, and I have a student school in the East Central District compared to my current seventh grade year. I feel really blessed to be a part of the district that cares not only about educating their students but dedicated to developing compassionate individuals that can settle their own attitude graduation.
Hi, my name is Lisa Deppen, and I am proud of EC. Before I was an employee, I was a Mustang, a Steamer, and proudly the class of 1995 Hornet. I live and breathe this community. I work out here, I go to church here, and I live here. East Central has been a community that's always shown me lots of support and love as I have ventured in life. And most importantly, I am a proud parent of a Hurricane and a Hornet.
We are EC!
Hola, mi nombre es Lucas Torres y estoy en el séptimo grado en Heritage de Los Huanos. He estado en el programa de 21 años desde el 15 de septiembre en la escolaridad María de Tronco. Este el más estimado de estar en el East Central District porque ha aprendido mucho y he aprendido muchos con mis amigos. Gracias.
As a retired EC ISD teacher, a parent and grandparent of former students and a current substitute, I understand why parents choose East Central. The staff is caring, efficient, and effective in preparing students for their future. Whether they choose higher education or the workforce, they will be prepared for success.
I love the most about East Central is being a part of LeMarne, and it makes me feel like a part of another community. And I also love being part of the East Central football team, and it makes me feel like a part of a whole.
I chose East Central because of all the heritage that comes with it. My future in-laws went here, their parents went here, my fiance wishes he went here to create this unique family feel. I've never felt more welcome somewhere in my life, and this is coming for me, and it's very intense, it's for the first time.
With sincere thanks for your commitment to keeping the tradition and spirit of EC and John Glenn alive, we offer you a small token of our appreciation.
Oh, by the way, you know, that young man that was speaking Spanish? What he said is, "I kind of like it here."
Yeah, they're fat-free. They're free for the fatties.
I definitely want to do a shout-out to Malia Stonich, one of our fabulous employees. She was the creator, producer, and editor of that outstanding video, so thank you so much for your time and effort into that that really highlighted what is EC. And I also want to thank the parents of the students that we had here this evening, the Friesenhahns and Ms. Davenport. Who are generational EC. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. I think we'll be in good hands. Thanks to the students for starting our meeting off this evening. It's always a special pleasure when y'all can come and get us started off on the right foot. Makes us keep ever in front of us why we're really here. It's about student achievement, it's about service to the community. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to have some awards and recognitions, and then we're going to take a short break so that those of you who are thinking about going to do homework in a couple of weeks can get a way to do that. And those of you who may be preparing for classes eventually in a week or so will be able to go and do that. So, if you'll give us a few more minutes here, we'll get to that break. We'll now move on to our awards and recognitions.
Mr. President, trustees, we have a very special recognition this afternoon, and so at this time, I'd like to invite Chief Durnowski to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Toscano. Board of Trustees, good evening. Today is a special day. We're going to recognize two of our East Central finest. If I can have Corporal Mora up here and Officer Puente. Corporal Mora has seventeen years with the East Central School District, and Officer Puente has got thirteen years with us. Also, may I have Majesty and the family come up here, please? Also, board, as you're aware, here at the East Central ISD Police Department, we have an outstanding relationship with the Sheriff of Bear County. We work together not just for our schools but for our communities to ensure the safety of everybody here. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Sheriff Salazar that's going to help me do the awards. On June 20th, 2017, at approximately 17:15 hours, Corporal Mora and Officer Puente responded to a residence in the 6600 block of Stewart Road for a possible drowning involving a child. Once the officers arrived, they located a child on the ground unresponsive. Both officers initiated CPR on the child while administering chest compressions. Corporal Mora noticed the child beginning to make noises and started to brief. The sheriff's office also made a location at this time. EMS made location and took over with advanced life-saving equipment. The child was then airlifted to the hospital, and I'm so glad to say Majesty made a full recovery without any complications. Now, I'm going to pass it on to Sheriff Salazar. Thank you, Chief. Well, I think everybody here, those of us that know the whole story on this incident, it's just, it's an inspirational incident. The fact that one of these officers was just doing some proactive police work and was out catching up to a speeding driver and pulled over that speeding driver and found out it was a family member of Majesty's that was headed to the house because he'd gotten a call that Majesty was in trouble. And so, the officer, being a proactive officer like he is, followed that driver to the house and found the situation that he did and jumped into action. And certainly, did everything that they could to save Majesty's life, and here you see the results. Here's Majesty and all of his majesty, for sure. I'm comfortable saying that, you know, that yes, it was the great work of two heroes that were selfless and were ready to do the right thing, but I'm also, I also feel safe in saying that it was certainly God's hands guiding them to that scene and guiding them to save this young man's life. And so, here in just a few minutes, we're going to be presenting them with another couple of medals on behalf of the sheriff's office, some life-saving medals. But I think the best prize that these two guys could have is this young man right here that something tells me he's going to do something with his life, and he's going to do some big things, and he's going to really, really repay these guys by doing big things in his life. So, here in just a little bit, if you don't mind, Chief, can we go ahead and present our medals?
Corporal Mora, Officer Puente, if I may, it's my honor to award you all with the life-saving medal from the Bear County Sheriff's Office. I appreciate it. On behalf of a grateful community and on behalf of myself and the rest of the sheriff's office, thank you all for a job well done.
Thank you, Sheriff. I do want to add one more thing. I am just so proud of these officers, the training that the district provides them, and we're constantly, constantly harping on training and training and training. What occurred is priceless. You can't put a price on that. This is Officer Mora's second life-saving award in his career with East Central. Several years ago, he saved a female at a restaurant. So, it just shows the commitment and dedication of these officers to the community, and I think we all ought to be grateful and thankful to the Lord, like the sheriff said, for these officers and for all our men and women in the East Central Police Department. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a little bit of a break and let everybody have some community time together, and we'll get started back up in about ten minutes. All right, well, that was fun. I'm always amazed that when, after we have our break, the front row's always empty. Yeah, so we have a bunch of really great church scholars in the front row.
Trouble in the back.
There you go. All right, do we have anyone who signed up for public comments? We have no one signed up for public comments. Our next item is public hearing for application for high school equivalency programs. Does anyone wish to speak at this point on a public hearing about the high school equivalency program? If not, then we will move on to our next agenda item. Superintendent's reports, first reports, personnel report.
Trustees, this month's report can be found in your electronic packet on page 10. As is typical this time of year, you'll see very little activity in terms of resignations, but you will see quite a bit of activity in terms of new hires as we last month finalized all of our filling of available positions. So, we should start to see a trend downward in activity in our personnel reporting going forward for the next few months. Like always, if you need any additional information regarding any of the information in the personnel report, let me know, and we'll get that for you.
All right, Health Services into your report.
At this time, I'd like to call Vet Sanders up to the podium. I believe trustees, in your packet, you'll have a Health Services year-end report, one-pager.
Mr. Toscano, Mr. Bryant, members of the board, I'm going to be presenting the Health Services end-of-year report for 2016-2017. The goals that the Health Services Department had for this school year in the area of academic learning environment was to return eighty-three percent of students back to class within fifteen minutes of arrival to the clinic. They were able to monitor this by utilizing their health office digital charting system where they can log in the time that the student arrives, kind of give a little bit about how they're triaged, and then give their departure time back to class. So, it just gives a little bit of an overview of what happened with the student while they were there in the clinic. So, if you look at your, sorry. If you look at the chart there, you will see that last school year, the percentage of students that were returned back to class within fifteen minutes was eighty-two point eight percent. This year, they had a percentage of ninety point seven percent of returning students back to class within that fifteen-minute timeframe. And they were really trying to do this to help maintain the instructional integrity of the learning and just keep that going and trying to get those students back to class so they could get back to that learning. The other goal that they, that Health Services had this year was to improve the screening-referral response from parents. So, every year, what they do is they will screen students for vision and hearing to see if there's any issues. So, what they wanted to do was get those referrals out and have those parents follow up with the physician to make sure that there weren't any major issues. So, if you look on your one-pager, you'll see that the vision-referral response last year was thirty point four percent, and this year it was thirty-three percent. And they also manage this, or they keep track of this with that Health Services, that Health Office system as well. So, what they'll do is if they have or they know of a family that's in need when they send out the referral, our nurses will provide resources to them that are either low-cost or free for parents to go and have their children checked. For the hearing-referral response last year, the response was twenty-two percent by parents. It did drop a little bit this year to twenty-one point three percent. As we look at culture and climate, one of the goal that they had for this year was to, for Health Services, the nurses, to have greater access to resources online to provide exceptional service to students, parents, and staff. And so, in April, or April of 2017, they were given access to several online resources, the Texas School Procedures Manual, the Texas Guide to School Health Program, Health Office Anywhere, and MTRAC. So, as we look forward to this year, there was a transition in our Health Services Department late in the spring, early in the summer with Mrs. Jalen Hart, who was our high school nurse. She was our nurse at the high school transitioning into the Health Services facilitator position. Ms. Hart has eighteen years of experience in East Central, and she has experience from elementary to high school because prior to her time at the high school, she spent at Sinclair. So, her kind of thinking ahead is that she, they, the nurses, want to support the profile of the East Central graduate, really looking at promoting lifelong learning from that nurse and health aspect. So, what they would like to do is work on capturing teaching moments when they're with students in the clinic. So, what they envision is that when they have a student come in, that they'll share health information or tips or things of that sort that connect that current clinic vision to how they can apply it later on in their life and the impact that it could have. So, that's the review for this year and kind of what the department's looking at for next year. I'll be happy to answer any questions this time.
You won't have any questions? Ms. Brazil.
I knew I was going to say something, right? I couldn't be more pleased. I love the fact that turnaround time getting the kids back to class, ninety percent, and still trying to have opportunities to teach and to do all the other million things I know y'all are trying to do, I'm very impressed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And then upcoming events.
Trustees, before we look at the calendar in your miscellaneous packet, you should have a Manila folder. That is from the athletic office, and it should have your season tickets for the football season as well as a VIP parking pass, and you should also have a district pass for all athletic events across the district, home and away. If you need anything else, be sure to let me know, and we'll accommodate. On the August calendar, a couple of things that I wanted to point out, on the 28th, the kids are coming back. First day of school. Yay, it's going to be awesome. It's what all parents are saying, okay, right?
Mr. Toscano, do we get to hear the story again?
We, whoa, yeah, we have to keep, one time, one time. I don't know if everybody can take it more than once. Meet the Hornets at the high school stadium. I believe we're starting at 6:30. Is that the correct time, Mr. McKay? We kind of went back and forth a little bit. Okay, 6:30 at the stadium on Wednesday, the 30th. We will have that special board meeting. Yes, the legislative session, special session is done, and so, we will have a special meeting beginning at 5:30 on the 31st to address our budget. If we look at the 25th for just a moment, there was a correction on the football scrimmage, which is Friday, the 25th. It says 10:15, I believe. It starts at 8:45. Moving on into September, a couple of dates. Labor Day holiday on the 4th. Later in the month, we'll have a student holiday on the 29th. That is one of the new staff development days. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the 14th, and our first official football game is not until the 8th. San Benito will be traveling to Hornets Stadium. Of course, across both August and September, you'll see open houses, meet the teachers, all kinds of athletic events, and plenty of things going on. Very busy months, August and September.
All right, anybody needs any clarification about those events, please? All right, anybody needs any clarification about those events, please get in touch with Superintendent's Office. Moving on to our action agenda, item A, approval of the application for high school equivalency program.
So earlier, the, we held a public hearing, which is the first requirement of the board in order for the district to consider submitting an application for the program. So the high school equivalency program is, is basically one of the instructional programs that helps kids prepare for the GED. Our intent by asking for your approval for the district to submit the application for the program is for us to be able to provide this as an option for students in our Bear County Learning Center. There are some requirements for students to qualify. For example, they may have a court-ordered GED. They may be in their third year of high school and have a very minimal number of credits obtained and there are a few other ways that they could qualify. So with your approval, if we were to submit the application and gain approval to implement the high school equivalency program, we would be able to take a new student at BCLC, evaluate their current circumstances and, and approve for their program of study to be the high school equivalency program, if it's appropriate. And so what we're asking for again today is for your approval of the district submitting the high school equivalency program application. If there are no questions, I would...
Questions?
Okay, I recommend board approval of the application for high school equivalency program as submitted.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the application for the high school equivalency program. Sheriff, entertain a motion.
No move.
Have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions, any comments, any concerns? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Adoption of the resolution for East Central Police Department application for the rifle-resistant body armor grant program.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, due to the unfortunate incidents that occurred in Dallas, Texas, where several law enforcement personnel were shot and killed despite wearing traditional body armor, Governor Abbott made available a grant program that would require school boards to adopt or law enforcement governing bodies to, to adopt a resolution allowing the organization to submit a grant that would then fund for that local law enforcement agency to have rifle-resistant body armor option. And so the, this body armor is a much more upgraded body armor. It can handle high-powered rifle ammunition as well as armored piercing ammunition. The grant would fully fund the purchase of that body armor for all thirteen of our officers. Total would be around five thousand two hundred dollars. And again, the, the requirement by Governor Abbott is that the board adopt a resolution, which would then authorize me to authorize Chief to submit the application and guarantee that that's what we would do with the funds. And if for some reason we weren't to purchase the body armor, given the award of the grant, we would agree then to give that back to the state. So that's essentially what the resolution is saying.
Any questions?
Surprised we're getting money. Surprised we would get the money if they provided. Usually it's the other way around, we have to provide our own.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay. Mr. President, I recommend board approval for the adoption of the resolution for East Central Police Department application for the rifle-resistant body armor grant program.
Have a recommend, recommendation by the superintendent to adopt, adopt the resolution on body armor for police department. Sheriff, entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Beriantos, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And item C, consider and take possible action to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of approximately fifteen-acre tract of land located at IH-10 Converse, Texas.
Trustees, as we're all aware from our last demographic study, the district has experienced significant residential growth in the northwest sector of our district, particularly the I-10 sixteen oh four corridor. And in, in, in looking at options in the area, we've discovered that the Paloma subdivision, which when built out in the next three to five years, that it's going to have approximately twelve hundred homes. There's an adjoining property, a hundred acres, that is going to be developed with an additional three hundred homes. The Park at Escondido, which is on the other side of I-10, just south and, south and nor, is that possible? North and east of, north and west? I'm, I'm upside down. However, it is on the other side of I-10 and on the other side of sixteen oh four, but in our district, they're adding another phase and intend on, they're building a model home as we speak and they intend on building out four hundred homes on that property, on that development. And then Summer Hill, which is behind Quiet Creek, again, all homes in our school district, intends on building more than four hundred homes. So in that very concentrated area, in the immediate future and in the next three to five years, we expect a lot of residential development, as our demographer predicted a few years ago. So as a result, the district has identified, if you look in your electronic packet on page thirty-four, beginning on thirty-four, a piece of property, approximately fifteen acres. It is in the Paloma development. In, in a preliminary investigation, we've determined that the, the property would conceivably include site work with minimal grade change once done, meaning that there wouldn't be any need for site, site work. All utilities in the development would be provided as well as a master drainage plan so there wouldn't be any need for detention pond, et cetera. When you look at, there's three different images there. The first one just kinda gives you an idea of where it's at, on the feeder road of I-10, going east from sixteen oh four. You can see where the property is outlined. And then the second document in there shows you unit three, five, and seven, and nine. The property we're talking about is unit three and if you would look at that with me for just a moment, you'll see that unit three is fifteen point one acres and that it's got a little dogleg in it because initially, in their program there, they had a little commercial piece of property of a little bit over two acres, I believe, that has frontage on unit six A's road. One of the options that we would like to discuss with them is moving that unit three property forward so we would have that entire frontage and moving the commercial property to the back as a possibility. Of course, we haven't entered into any kind of formal negotiations, that would be what we're talking about today. And then the third document shows the entire subdivision with all thirteen or fourteen phases. And again, unit three is to the eastmost portion of that development. So what, what we would be asking the board to consider today is to authorize myself or designee to enter into formal negotiations with the land development company, which is PDI Development Incorporated, with intentions of coming back to the board if we were able to, to agree to a price and the terms that, that we thought was, was worthy of your consideration.
If I can add to that, I'd just like to authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations for the tract of land at IH-10 in Converse and bring an offer to the board for further approval.
We have a motion by Ms. Beriantos, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item D, approval to amend Tasby Medicaid billing contract.
Yes, sir. Ms. Burns?
Okay, I'm gonna do my best on this one. What we're asking the board to do is to amend our contract with Tasby. Tasby provides us a very vile service of revenue that we get from Medicaid eligible billing. And normally, since two thousand and eight, we've been in contract with Tasby and normally it's a three-year contract. But since we started this in two thousand and eight, other businesses have realized how lucrative this service is to school districts and so we started looking at continuing with Tasby or going to some of the other companies that offer this. And we realized that we need to do really due diligence in making sure we, if we change, that we make sure we go to the right company. Well, our contract was gonna end with Tasby in August and Tasby, instead of making us sign up for three years, they said we could have a one-year extension, which I think was very nice of Tasby to give us a one-year extension because that will give us time to see if we wanna stay with Tasby or if we wanna go with another provider. Because, for instance, this year, we've received one million four hundred thousand dollars worth of Medicare eligible reimbursement to the district. So we wanna make sure that we go to a company that will provide the resources to the district, to the staff that have to enter all this and that also we're protecting ourselves and not getting into something that we shouldn't. And Tasby's giving us enough time to double-check that we should stay with them or that we should go with somebody else. But that one year, we really need it to, to really look at everything. So that's what we're asking, is to extend our contract for one year with Tasby and Tasby's very agreeable with that.
Where is that, one point four million dollars goes to?
It helps, it goes into a federal line item and it helps balance the budget. It does not have to go back to, most of the services they provide is from special ed, but it doesn't have to go back to special ed and it helps us balance the budget.
So one year is adequate time to be able to really evaluate which way you wanna go?
Oh, it will be enough time. We were looking at it from about May to probably July and Shannon did really due diligence looking at the contract to make sure that we weren't gonna be hijacked with anything, with anybody else. And we saw some things we really wanted to look at and we were really worried that we might go to another company and wish we hadn't. So when we talked to Tasby, they said, "Well, you know, we'll give you a year and you could, that's enough time." And it is, it's gonna be enough time for us to make sure that, oh, we find a provider that will really service East Central or we might find that Tasby is the best bet for East Central.
Any other question? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of amending the term of the contract with Tasby from the three-year renewal to a one-year renewal.
We have a motion from the superintendent to amend our Tasby medical billing contract. Sheriff, entertain a motion.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Yeah.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any other question? All? All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, does any board member wish to have a consent item pulled from the agenda? Not, Sheriff, entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Beriantos. Mr. Toscano, do you have any other business for us, sir?
No, sir.
All right. That being the case, Sheriff, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Oh, we do. If you don't mind. I gotta go, I gotta go to the back page. All right, so...
I'm gonna get away.
Y'all, all y'all will be able to go home. All of us are going to move into an executive session. Board of Trustees, on August the seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, beginning at seven twenty-five PM, convened in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act Governance Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, and five-five-one point zero-seven-four, personnel matters. We are headed for executive session, y'all have a great evening. The board ended its closed meeting at eight thirty-five PM on August the seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. No action was taken in the closed meeting. Agenda item nine, superintendent evaluation and contract. Sheriff, entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the board president to negotiate a contract with the superintendent as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion to authorize the board president to negotiate a contract with the superintendent. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. We have a motion by Ms. Brazil. We have a second by Mr. Garza. Are there any questions, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Mr. Toscano, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, now Sheriff, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Okay.
We have a second by Ms. Beriantos, we are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you.